Which can be used to grab brush and transport it back to the brush pile. Uh, there's a, an example of a brush grapple, though that is a bigger unit than we would be asking for the three thirty series started one hundred and ten thousand. Uh, general properties department would also be able to utilize a compact truck loader to pile snow during heavy storms, clean up storm debris, most from water management bonds with one of the additional attachments. Maintain the walking path at Sidell Brooks Junior Park with a tiller conditioner or conditioner attachment and perform routine field maintenance. And there's just an example of one piling snow. Y'all have any questions?
So, um, you, you had a couple of examples of some activities that could be done that would require additional attachments. Would those be part of this request or would those have to still be purchased as well?
And so we're the, uh, to start off, as I understand that we would be looking for, uh, two attachments to come with it. The standard was, I guess, three counting the standard bucket.
Okay.
Um, we would have to have that brush grapple and then, uh, talk with Mike and find out which one even, uh, like months of general properties, which will be the most valued.
Okay, so that's request has the, the brush grapple and then one additional that trying to determine which would be the best.
It's since, uh, costs do seem to be skyrocketing.
Yeah.
Uh, every time I talked to, I've got of Richmond or talking to you chief. Um, but I think as we stand right now, we would certainly be able to get those with the number.
Tracking, okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
There might be a little more.
Tracking. I appreciate that, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are you aware of there any ongoing or recurring maintenance costs associated with owning this piece of equipment?
They will, they required normally, um, you know, one hundred to two hundred level service, uh, two hour, one hundred to two hundred hour services. And then five hundred. So, yes, there, it will require anything that any mechanical vehicle will require, it's going to need your, your oil changes, hydraulic fluid. Uh, the trucks are going to wear out probably three thousand hours. Uh, we won't be doing a lot of work on pavement, which will extend the life. But yes, there will certainly be, uh, ongoing maintenance costs for it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take a quick break.
Sure. We'll take five minutes.
Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, next slide. Capital improvements Program Request for Fiscal Year Twenty Two, Twenty Three. Next slide. The age old problem in community development is the lack of technology and capabilities to make our records and documentation available to our customers and citizens. With the board's approval of a new permitting system during the last CIP request, we have made the first step to making that change. Now we would like to continue in that process by having our current records stand and made available to be shared with the public. Next slide. Pictured here is our current method of document storage. All documents within this space are public records. At this time, the only method of viewing these records will be to come in person to our office and search through the files. Check out the files for copies or submit a FOIA request and pay the associated fee for the, to receive copies of the record. As you can imagine, the inconvenient process of obtaining these records is a common complaint within our department. Next slide. Our new permitting program, Uniticity Five, will go live this week. All newly submitted parcel file and permit records will be entered into the system and soon available to the public via an online, public facing portal. However, without scanning and uploading of the current paper records within our office, any documentation or parcel history prior to the new permitting system will not be readily available to the public. Next slide. Once live in Uniticity Five, our department has every intention of utilizing this program to its fullest capacity. Without having our parcel files and records scanned and uploaded into the system, we would be decreasing the efficiency of this program. As of now, no historical parcel data will be available in our new system, aside from the data uploaded from our current BAI AS four hundred system or GIS. Pertinent records to include site plans, boundary line adjustments, rezonings, et cetera, will currently not be on record and available to research on our new system because the files will not be available electronically. Next slide. I'm sure you're questioning why community development has been hoarding all this paper. The most concise answer would be that we're required to. Per the Library of Virginia Record Retention Schedule, our office is required to maintain most of our zoning, building and construction related documentation for a minimum of three to five years. Some documents are required to be kept permanently. Right now, our office is literally at capacity when it comes to storage. Having these historical files scanned and uploaded into our new Uniticity Five system will not only make the records more available, but will also open up spaces within our department. Next slide. In short, our total monetary request is seventy thousand dollars. We have been in contact with at least three separate companies that are capable of scanning our documents and uploading the documents into the proper fashion for our new system. This request amount would cover pickup, storage, multi-size document scan, and indexing of files so that they could be accessible. Any questions?
They could kind of answer my only one, so they come pick everything up, take it, do it offsite, bring it back.
Yes, sir.
Supposed to bring in the equipment to do here.
They don't bring the equipment to us. That's correct. They pick up, uh, we box it and send it to them or they'll pick it up. Every company does it a little bit differently, but it's always offsite.
What happens when they bring the stuff back?
That's a good question. Um, some things we may want to consider an offsite storage. Um, some things per, uh, Library of Virginia, we can destroy. Um, but some records, you know, sometimes paper is best, but not always efficient.
So, the documents that will be scanned, so let's say, the, um, the preschool where, you know, the schematic drawings of the, where the plumbing is located and all that. Would that be scanned? Would it be a complete scan of all the current documents?
Maybe not the preschool from the Roosevelt era, but yes, ideally. Building plans, especially for commercial buildings, is something we would like to keep. Um, some things will not be on public record. You know, I don't think that we would want building plans of our schools publicly available. Um, but for example, you could click Immunity Five on your property and bring up your building permits, your subdivision plot, your rezoning application, and all that historical data would be there for you.
So, the, the, the schools, um, have a lot of, um, blueprints. Would you scan them but not be available to the public? Or would you not scan them?
We have not, um, put in our, our request that includes whatever the schools may have. We only have included what we actually have in our office, which we do have some, um, like the middle school expansion. Obviously, we have that information that would get scanned, um, but it would not be in that public facing portal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Muncy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the members of the board. Um, here tonight to, uh, ask that General Properties, uh, get a new building. Um, currently, we're leasing a building out by the, uh, the old, uh, after landfill about two miles from Stafford County line. Um, it's not a great location. It's a good, good shop, uh, workforce right now, but, uh, like I said, we're spending a lot of time running back and forth, uh, because we're not centrally located here within the county. I'm asking that we, uh, we're three hundred and fifty thousand. I don't know if that cost will cover the entire building. One, we, uh, we need to do probably a site analysis on, you know, um, on a piece of property. I know at one time that, um, they were talking about doing a building right behind here, the sheriff's office. We thought about maybe also over by the service authority, but I know that was a, a V dot facility at one time and worried about the fill in the bottom where we were talking about maybe possibly locating the building. The other logistics with that location would be getting back out onto Route Three on certain times of the day. If you're going west, it's not a problem, but if you want to come back in towards the county, it is. And, um, just, I think it would be better if we were centrally located here within the county and, uh, especially with fuel costs. Maintenance on the, uh, the vehicles, the wear and tear.
Mr. Chair. If you use property over here, would it be like a steel building?
Yes.
And do you think it would cover with the three fifty?
That I'd have
That's something that would have to be estimated.
It depends on the site work and, you know, um, the utilities and that, and, and what we did actually with the building. I would like to, you know, to upgrade. The guys use a lot of chemicals, so I would like to have showers, you know, so that, you know, when we're doing the roundup and we, you know, are getting sprayed with this stuff that we can actually come in and shower off, um, that type of thing and, 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 you know, a decent bathroom.
So I was thinking of something like the bus garage.
Something like that, yes.
Something like that, maybe not as large, but.
Um, I would like to have the same size that we have.
Okay.
Currently, right now, a forty by ninety six.
Cause it makes sense to have our own building on our own, then renting and centrally located, so you're able to.
And currently, right now, I think we're spending, what, close to twenty five thousand a year on rent, something like that.
And is the three hundred and fifty thousand, is, is that a good estimate or is that?
I just, I had get, had, uh, received a number for the steel building, but right now, that building, uh, was almost a year ago when I got the price for that building. And it was a hundred and twenty some thousand at the time. The building was already manufactured here in Virginia, sitting, but didn't have the openings or anything. Um, the previous owner, our buyer, had backed out. We could have got the building at the time for like seventy eight thousand, but of course, with the, the CIP process, you know, that building's gone. So, I, I just kind of used a hundred and fifty thousand for the building itself and then the other two hundred for utilities, concrete, you know, the finishes, so.
Right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
You, you already answered my question on how much you pay in the rent per year. So we, how many facilities do we rent for the county uses?
You have this one, you have, um, now DSS rents a facility, but that's going to be covered through their budget, but you have to deal with their budget.
IT.
IT, I don't think about Chris.
Virginia Cooperative Extension also.
Right, yeah.
So at least four buildings.
At least, yes.
Do you have any idea what the total rents are?
Thank you, Mr. Muncy.
Thank you.
Greetings, Mr. Clark.
You do it that way, then they can just read the comment. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I thank you for the opportunity to present the Parks and Recreation Proposed Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Years Ending Twenty Twenty Three through Twenty Twenty Seven. Um, before we get to the capital equipment upgrades, um, piggybacking on Dr. Boyd's comments on the Quonset Hut, those flat roof sections that need repair also come over to the Quonset Hut, and that is, that leaking also does occur into the Quonset Hut bathrooms. Um, so just as we address that, depending on the lifespan of that building, and then also if we were to replace the preschool building, just remember that we offer over a hundred sections of gymnastics a year, and so the Quonset Hut is very important to us and how that would go and where we would put gymnastics following. But for FY twenty twenty three, we seek funding for two projects. Um, upgrading parks for sports tourism and regional collaboration are both goals of the Tourism Strategic Plan. In order to make our parks more attractive to tournament organizers and possibly apply for large national tournaments with our regional counterparts, batting cages and new and additional soccer goals are needed. Due to the age and deterioration of the goals, we do not have a sufficient number to host a large tournament at this time. Um, batting cages would also increase our marketability of our complexes for baseball and softball tournaments, as well as allow additional use for our local teams. Uh, and then the other, um, item is the twenty twenty two Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment noted playgrounds as a, um, priority need. Sealston Sports Complex is the only large county park without a playground. And we would, we frequently get requests for one as young children have nothing else to do while they're at events, watching games or practices. Uh, we propose adding a playground to the complex for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. I can't say at this time, there is one manufacturer that does have a fifty fifty matching grant that is out there, so if we are able to get on this prior to the end of October, I can apply for that grant. Going forward for fiscal year ending twenty twenty four, we have six proposed projects. Um, first is starting the master planning process for the three hundred and forty acres that include Barnesfield and Wayside Park and the mitigation properties. We would like to add lighting to softball fields B and C at Barnesfield Park, construct a dog park in a central county location, replace the playground at Barnesfield Park, which is at the end of its useful life, add permanent restrooms to Sidell Brooks Junior Park, and begin the implementation of the Trailways Fusibility Study. For the fiscal year ending twenty twenty five, that's highlighted with the continuation of the Barnesfield Park Master Planning Process and the construction of new amenities, repaving the parking lot at Sidell Brooks Park after the decommissioning of the Perkins Corner wastewater plant, and continued inflammation, implementation of the Trailways Fusibility Study. For the year ending twenty twenty six, our four projects are completing the Barnesfield Park construction process, adding field lights to the baseball fields two and three at Sealston Sports Complex, beginning the planning process for a recreation center, and continuing projects from the Trailways Fusibility Study. And at this time, our only project for the year ending twenty twenty seven is the construction of a recreation center.
So, at Sealston, I noticed when I'm at events there, the kids are on the playground at the school.
If you're at soccer, kids will go over to the school. If you are at baseball, they do not. They, kids will bring, parents will bring wagons full of, wagons full of toys to entertain their children when they're at baseball events because it is too far. I measured it, now I don't recall what it is off the top of my head, but the distance from, from the, the baseball fields to the school playground is very far. And if you're there for an event and school is in session, you can't go there. We have a picnic shelter that is there to be rented and don't have an adjacent playground. And I think it wouldn't, we would definitely increase our rentals if that, that ability was there as well. Barnesfield gets rented pretty much every weekend from April to October.
So at the Sealston, there's, are there daytime events during the week?
Depending on, it depends on the, you know, the, the day. I mean, the there, in turn the summer, there, there are folks that would come up, that do come up. I mean, seal, people are at Brooks Park every day on the playground. And there's not that case for Sealston because there's not there that ability. So west, you know, people on the western end, which, you know, we just said seven hundred and eighty five students at Sealston Elementary School, they all have to drive into the county to find a playground. Or go to the elementary school instead of coming to a park. But you can't, a homeschool child can't go to the park today at, tomorrow at noon at Sealston because that's school day.
Well, the homeschool, they should be in school during the day too.
Homeschoolers brought very different schedules and there's no set hours on when they have to be in school.
Yeah, I know. So I, I, I would not be a real fan of putting a, a playground next to a playground. It seals the Newzaria Playground that has a large amount of access to it. Might not be twenty four hours a day, but it has plenty of access to it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. So we have requested, uh, four projects within this, uh, within the Capital Improvement Program. Uh, the first one is our, um, pretty much our ambulance rotation program. Uh, we have seven ambulances and this is to replace, uh, one ambulance about seven, every seven to eight years. Got a bit of bad news about ambulances. Our vendor said to plan for about a twenty to thirty percent, twenty five to thirty percent price increase. So that takes us up to, um, I plan for a fifteen thousand dollar price increase. That takes us up to, uh, roughly about a seventy thousand dollar increase. Um, obviously, it's no secret that we need to have, uh, ambulances that are well maintained and in good order. Um, I used my PowerPoint just as a, as a reference, uh, to help facilitate the conversation. Last year was an unprecedented year for us. We actually ran close to four hundred more calls than we did, uh, the previous year. You can see the transports we've made to all the surrounding hospitals. Uh, I think this board is very well aware that we do not have a hospital in King George County. So every time we transport somebody, it's outside of this county. It's just a, uh, list of, uh, the EMS calls. You've seen this before. This is our twenty twenty one numbers. One of the, one of the points that I want to highlight in the conversation about ambulances is the ambulance that you approved last year. It was in, in last year's Capital Improvement Program. The production, uh, date of order was October first of twenty twenty one. It's still, we still do not have a manufacturer go down the assembly line production date as we sit here today. Okay? Um, I was told also by the vendor that if we ordered a new ambulance today, don't expect it until twenty twenty five. Okay, so one of, one of the things that it's very important to mention is that, is that the decisions made and the planning is not, we order an ambulance today and we get it two months from now, three months from now. We're talking eighteen months to, uh, twenty four months. So, um, I can certainly get into any of the details about what the importance of our ambulances are. I think that's pretty much, uh, common sense and, you know, when we respond to people's medical emergencies, uh, we're And, you know, when we respond to people's medical emergencies, we're essentially providing a basic and advanced life support care where minutes and seconds make a difference. It's very important that we, that we have a good maintenance program on our units, and which we do. We average about 175,000 miles between all seven ambulances every year. Okay? We, we rotate them out when they're well over 200,000 miles. Okay? They are our workhorse when it comes to the equipment for emergency medical services. As you can see, just on that chart, we run, we respond, and we're called to many serious emergencies in nature. We also are called to many lower urgent calls in nature. And, and that's something that we, that our society and our nation and, and communities are calling 911 more for lower urgent reasons, and we have to be able to respond to those as well. Chris, if you can, I don't have a clicker, do I? You do, okay. Keep clicking. Keep clicking. If you go back, this is just a, this is just a graph of, of total calls. This is over 10 years. And as you can see, in the, in the blue line is our total number of calls. The red line underneath is our emergency medical service calls, and you can see our transports also a big uptick from even 2020 to 2021. If you can go to the next slide. This, well, this does cover our ambulances there at the bottom, but as you can see, our plan for replacing our apparad, apparatus and how it intertwines with the capital improvement program is we have a, our plan's not a five-year plan. We come to you with a five-year plan because that's what it's, what the CIP is based on. You go to the next slide, Chris. This is pretty much our master plan for apparatus. Okay, so this tells me how long are we going to predict? How long's a fire engine going to be good for? Where that fire engine is? How long's an ambulance going to be good for? How long is our tanker's going to be good for? And where in the, in the, in the 30-year spectrum are we going to be looking to replace that? So as you can see, some of this is even pushed out to FY 46 and 47. So, you know, these, these apparatus, with the exception of the ambulances, particularly the fire truck that you approved, you approved in last year's CIP, we're expecting to receive that in the summer of 2023. Okay, and that was ordered last year. Okay, about an 18-month, roughly an 18-month lead time. But as this new equipment comes in, this list will be rotated and you'll, the numbers change. I'm happy to answer any questions on the ambulances. The second, the second project is a Opticom preemption system. And what an Opticom preemption system is, is right now, we have 14 major, 14 intersections that have traffic signals in our community. Okay? And as emergency vehicles, ambulances, fire trucks, and even deputy patrol vehicles, when they approach an intersection, if it's a red light intersection, you have to go to that intersection, stop at that intersection. There may be a line of cars in front of you at that intersection. You either have to try to go around it. You can either turn your lights off, maybe wait for it to go green if it's a lower urgent call, or you have to get to the intersection, try to clear that intersection, and continue across. And with more traffic, that is becoming a more hazardous thing to do. So what a, what an Opticom system is, is a infrared signal receiver that's on each vehicle, and each intersection has a, there's a transmitter and a receiver, and it sends an infrared signal to turn the light green as we approach when you're running an emergency priority code. So this would cover, this price would cover all 14 intersections, would cover all fire rescue vehicles, fire trucks and ambulances, and would cover also all the sheriff's vehicles. The big price is into the intersections, doing the work on the intersections. It has to be coordinated with VDOT. It has to be permitted through VDOT, and it also has to go through the contractor that does the Opticom GTT technology installations on those intersections. But it, VDOT allows it, but they don't pay for it. And they have to approve it, but there's no funding there. That's a, that's a local decision, if that's something you want to do. But I can assure you, there's no secret that our roadways are getting more busier, and that this is just something that's, that is certainly I'm passionate about, and I think it's, I think it's safer for our personnel, and it's also safer for the public that's on the roadways. The next, the next, yeah, if you could just stop right there on that one, Chris. The next project that we have is our two fire rescue facilities, and that is, obviously, this board knows where we're at with Company Two, and we're finalizing the, the terms of the land acquisition. But there's certainly a need for that station, that we build that station. We need to get off of Dahlgren Road. We need to get into a more modern facility. That mission at Company Two in Dahlgren is split between the old Rescue Squad Station, which was built in 1954, and the old fire station that we're currently in that was built in the later 80s and opened in, I think, 1990. That station was never intended for us to use it the way we're using it. Certainly Dahlgren Road has gotten a lot busier since 1990. So we got us a good location, we believe, a new, new location that we're certainly moving forward with. But there's definitely a need to get that station, to get a new, modern station that is more apt for 24/7 operations. The second part of that project is putting, if you see on this map, the green area is our primary first due for Company Two. The blue area is the primary first due for Company Three, the Fairview Beach Station. And the yellow area is the primary first due for Company One. That yellow area is 113 square miles of the 183 that encompasses the county. So what we would like to do, what our vision is, is to go to something like this. And this would basically split the Company One and, and looking at a new shallow fire and rescue station, a new Company Four station that would cover about, close to about 60 square miles of more of our, of our southeast portion of the county. To get from Company One all the way to past three and 301 and service that end of the county takes a lot of time for our, for our apparatus, especially when you're in a business where time is your, is your biggest commodity. So I do think that we need to press forward with Company Two. It's no secret, there's a lot of needs here at this, throughout the county, countywide, and they all cost a lot of money. But certainly planting seeds for a Company Four station is, is needed. And with that comes the personnel and the staffing to go along with it. There's no, no sense of building an empty fire station. So our next project is, this is the, our first, my first request, official request of a aerial apparatus ladder truck. And that is certainly not in this year, but in 2425, which again, if it was purchased in FY 2425, you're, we're talking about two years down the road before you get it, before it's in service and, in service in King George County. I will say that our department at one time had a ladder truck for a short stint, probably for about, maybe about seven, eight years. Okay? And it was a decision that was made prior to my arrival in, in, in the county. And if, and if I had to make the decision to buy that ladder apparatus, I would have said no deal because it was a, it was, had a lot of operational problems. The specifications on it were not appropriate, and it just had a short lifespan. It was bought, used, and it was bought without, with, with not as much due diligence as, as there should have been. We are seeing more, more buildings that are built and residences that are built that we can't service without using and asking for somebody else's help. So when we need a ladder truck, and, and you may say, well, why do we need a ladder truck? Let me tell you the size ladder we carry. Our basic ground ladder to service a, is to service a second floor window, which is 24-foot extension ladder. So if you need to get on a roof of a townhouse, you're not going to do it. A two-story townhouse, you're not going to do it. You got to have a ladder truck. You want to get on the roof of a commercial building, you're not going to do it with a 24-foot extension ladder, not unless it's a very small one level. If you need to use a ladder on the backside of a house where the front side's two stories and the backside's three stories in height, you're not going to reach it. Okay? You're not going to have an elevated master stream if you need to suppress a fire from up above. So who do we currently use? We currently use the base. That's our first, first people we, we, we try to go after to get mutual aid service. Fredericksburg, Charles County, Maryland, Colonial Beach, Stafford. So that's who we, that's who we have agreements with, and that's who we have to use. But we can only get their, get their service when they can provide it to us, and they're, they're not, you know, it's not out of service, they're not on other calls, et cetera. We're also seeing more plans come, come forward. And the planning aspect of looking at going to more first floor garage. The garage is on the first floor. Right above that is a primary living area, and right above that on the, on the, is a second floor living area, which is well beyond our, our 24-foot extension ladder reach. And if we don't want to go in this direction, I got some recommendations and ideas on that, too, and that is to look at capping out your building heights. But that's a, you know, that's, but what we have currently in the county, we need to, we need to be able to have this service. We have four-story hotel in Dahlgren. We can't, we couldn't get to the, we can get to the second story, that's it. Can't get to the third, can't get to the fourth. And we got three-story, other three-story hotels. So this is just something that we need to start planting the seeds on from a life safety perspective and not just constantly rely on our neighbors when it comes to that, that mission. And I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Chairman. The Opticom system, does that work with other, like on the way to Fredericksburg? The lights through Fredericksburg to get to the hospital?
If they have the Opticom transmitters, and Fredericksburg, I believe in some, not all the intersections in Fredericksburg do they have those. Some they do, and for the ones that do, it will work. And that's a great point. I thought about it, too. The, the difference with city of Fredericksburg where there's a little bit of a hesitation with that is the city of Fredericksburg has their own Department of Transportation. They maintain their own traffic signals. King George, they're all under control and ownership of VDOT. So what, so what happens is Fredericksburg doesn't have to use the GTT, it's called a global technology systems product. They don't have to use that. They use something that, that is a little bit different. And so there, there's still some question out there as to would it work and would it be compatible? The answer looks like preliminarily that it would.
So quite often, you spend more time getting from the bridge to nowhere to the hospital than you do coming from Company One because of the traffic. So I would be interested to know if that's compatible and they're willing to do that.
Yes. But what we, what we look at right now is that, that, the answer would be yes. If we have the transmitter, then their receiver, the, and the other, the other part of that, Mr. Collins, is what signals that they have, and I would think most of those signals would be their major enter, major signals, going out Route Three to Route One to get to Mary Washington Hospital. It would certainly provide a, a much safer and better transport to, to, of a patient to the hospital.
The, the Dahlgren Station, that, is that three bay or two bay?
Currently?
Yes.
Three bay.
And the Rescue Squad is how many bays?
That is, that has four bays, but they're single, all the, all these are single bays. They're not double stack bays.
And the, and the fire department down there in Dahlgren has a restroom and a shower?
It does, yes.
So that could, it's owned by the county?
It's owned by the volunteers.
You know where I was going with that for the building and grounds, building? So I guess that wouldn't probably not work out if it's owned by the volunteers. Are both buildings owned by the volunteers?
Yes, sir. And we have, the way our operational arrangement is, is we have a lease, and it's a gratis lease where there's no pay. We essentially pay for all the bills, all the maintenance, all the upkeep. There is just not a, you know, a typical arrangement that you pay per month. But they do own, they own both of the, of those facilities.
Chief, thanks for coming out. I think Mr. Collins got my question about the Opticom system with their localities. You already talked about staffing in regards to the fire and rescue stations. Company, the, the replacement company two, would you anticipate, because I know you, you continue to come, and I appreciate you not going with, hey, we need 17 new full-time fighters all at one time.
Correct.
But let's say that gets done fairly soon in regards to the replacement company two, would the staffing need to jump a significant amount at that point?
No, it would not. The only, the only trigger to that is that, and I think that when we design the new Company Two station, that we need to, we need to look at designing it for a, a future addition, this, a ladder truck. If that's the direction we go, we don't want to build the building and determine you need something after you build the build. But that would be, that would be the only trigger to have to hire some additional personnel. If you didn't do that, which, what we would be doing then would be cross-staffing an engine, a medic, and a ladder truck. And then, you know, the question is what happens when you need both for the emergency, you know? So, but, but there would not be a big increase in staffing. We're up to six personnel per shift at Company Two. So we're, we're, we're doing good in that location.
One more question? Okay. The aerial ladder truck, so obviously we have to get help. Do you know how often we, like how many calls we need in a year? That it requires an aerial ladder truck currently?
I don't have that number. I didn't, you know, bring that data with me. I can, I can say if, Chris, I don't know if you have a structure fire. Can you go up? Okay, no, it doesn't have it. I, I could get back with you on that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I will. I'll do that. All right. Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
So after the acquisition, Mr. Chairman. So after the acquisition of the property. So after the acquisition of the property, how long until it's, um, move forward with the planning stage and then the building stage?
I believe the, I believe Chief Moody has a, um, you already have a company that you're working with on the design and the layout and then, um, so are you in contact with them at this time or are you waiting to kind of get this other thing wrapped up?
Well, we, we definitely need to get the other wrapped up, but I have been in contact with them and they're, they're ready to move on it as soon as, uh, you know, we can have ownership of it. But my guess is by the time, by the time the, uh, probably nine months of, of engineering. Um, that's your, all your site work, engineering, uh, your architectural, your construction documents to be drawn up. Maybe nine months would probably be the quickest, couldn't, could go up to about eleven months. Uh, and then by the time you go out for a, um, um, you know, to put the project out to bid, uh, you're, you know, to, from construction to the time you actually cut the ribbon and move in and start operating out of there. Year and a half, another, another year and a half? So we're talking, you know, we're probably talking close to, close to three years. Um, from the time you would start operating out of that.
And I think our, our anticipation would be that we would have discussions about another financing into next year.
So wouldn't you want to bring that, um, the engineering up to this year to start that? But you don't want to do it because you don't?
It's all, it's, it's going to be all part of the, so that, that, that ten million dollars for the twenty-three, twenty-four number is inclusive of some of the engineering on that. And so I, I. Oh, okay, excuse me, I, this is news to me, um, having, they, they've already got that funded. The, there is money set aside already for the engineering, so it's not something that's listed on that project up there.
Thank you.
Yes, we went out to bid several years ago for a company to do the, um, design and it was approved in the CIP, but probably twenty?
I'd say probably five years ago, maybe.
That's about twenty seventeen.
That's because, uh, there was a piece of property that we were pretty much looking to finalize and, you know, it was the, the, the property had some issues, say the least. Uh, so, you know, we had to back out of that, but we didn't, you know, we didn't, uh, that, that, that funding to design and engineer and do the things stayed right there where it was.
Is that funding, um, including a ladder truck for that building?
No, that included a design and engi- architectural and engineering for a Company Two and a Company Four. However, it was based on the premise, and that's where some of the scope is going to have to change a little. Because it was based on the premise of having a, pretty much a mirrored duplicate station. Which is probably not going to happen because they're not mirrored duplicate, they're not, both sites have different constraints. So, but it was not, uh, it, it did not have the, um, anticipated at the time for a, of, a ladder truck at that station.
So it would be, um, wise to have that in the planning?
Absolutely.
Because eventually you're going to get a ladder truck. And that's just the way growth is, that's going to happen, so.
Yeah.
Why not, um, plan for that? You could put some other truck in, in the time being. So how mu- does there an additional amount that you would need for that planning in like this year?
For the? I don't think so. I think, I think what we have, I, I think what, what we're going to have to do is to sit down with the architect. And to say, we want to change some of the scope. I think what may be needed is that down the road, we may have to, we may have to ask for some additional funding for a Company Four design. Because that one pot of money was not able, there was not enough to handle both designs of both stations. So I think there's a, there's enough. I think there's enough money in the funding that's on the table as right now, but the scope is going to have to change based on the, the site location. And it's been five years. Lots changed in five years.
So the, so the priority would be to get that one built and then plan out for the other one?
Yes, sir.
And what, what year would that be started?
We have it, um.
Is that the twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yes, sir. And that, I will say, Mr. Collins, that's been a moving target. As the Company Two has been pushed back, so has the Company Four. So as, as one has been moved, uh, you know, because of the issues that we've had in, in particularly with the site location, finding a, a suitable piece of land. Is that the Company Four was always planned to come back a little further. Addition, and the other, the other, and I don't want to be remiss in saying this. Even if we had, um, funding today, we don't, we don't have staff. We don't have the personnel to staff a, properly staff a Company Four. I wouldn't even recommend it. But from the design standpoint, I think that, um, you know, at least maybe, you know, we look at at minimum three years after the fact, from the time we move in to the new Company Two station. From the time we start looking at planting the seeds for a Company Four.
Is the ten million dollars just a placeholder or is it a real number?
The, uh, the ten million dollars for, um, Company Two is based on what your, your numbers from last year, which were seven point five, and then we escalated it up just to, you know, capture some of the growth in costs. I think the ten million for the twenty-six, twenty-seven would be a placeholder, I, I would agree. And until we really get to work on that, I don't think that we have a fair understanding of what that cost could be. And we, we will have that for, for future discussions, but not at this time.
So Mr. Miller. These financing for these big projects, when, when, did you say you were going to bring that forward?
So we're meeting tomorrow with, with, um, with Kyle from Davenport about the projects. The, it's going to be our recommendation that we present to you, uh, a financing that would deal with the courthouse, the gap in the funding for the courthouse. From what was approved to what the final project, final cost was. Which is roughly, we figured twelve million dollars to have that. And then basically another twelve million dollars for, for, um, the radio system. That would be what, what he has suggested we could do. Because those are the more pre, those are the more, um, I guess impending or urgent projects. We come back when, after we've done the design on the, on Company Two, we're in a position next year to look at it. And I think you now maybe even have another reason to come back and look at some long-term financing because of the, the new, um, preschool. So you could come back and package something together in a, in a year and a half or two years on that too. So our plan, we'll, we'll have a better idea tomorrow at the board meeting, uh, based on our conversation with Mr. Locke.
So my concern is piecemealing the financing for this project and then next year this project, but if, so if you know what you're going to be doing, you should start sooner than later.
I'm happy to have Mr. Uh, Mr. Locke come and, and present to you. I think his perception was, or his, his, his recommendation would be that you, you look at a smaller one now because you could get a better, more competitive financing rate. As opposed to a big one, which you might put you out into the public, into the market. Like having to go to some of these big trading houses and things like that and going through the whole process with, you know, a, a public sale versus a private financing where you could offer it to local banks and for twenty-four million dollars, they're, they're going to jump at something like that possibly. That was his recommendation. Obviously, I'm not the one who's going to make that decision, that's a board decision. And so we, when, after we meet, we can update you tomorrow. And then we can set a meeting when he's ready to, to go with it and have him come and present to you guys what, what his recommendation is, and then you can make that decision. Uh, and he can tell you the reasons why he was favoring doing it that way versus the, the big.
But you'll let him know that, that, um, the interest is the fire station, the preschool, the radio system, the, um, you know? So he won't be just planning for this two projects, he'll be planning for the, all the projects.
Well, the preschool was taken out because the numbers were quite frankly not realistic. And I think even Dr. Benson admitted that, that those numbers weren't realistic. And so we, we never have had a conversation with, with, with Kyle about the preschool. He's aware of the preschool, he's aware of all of our financing. And I think his feeling was is that that, until you get a better number on that, you really don't want to be speculative of, of what you're going to need yet. And I think that we'll get to work on that in terms of getting with the schools on getting that number. I think that, um, Ms. Hahn pulled up the, the, the courthouse plan, if you will. Um, that Ms. Cupka asked was a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to do a study for that project. Now, when, I don't, what year was that? Twenty seventeen. So that maybe throw some inflation in. You might be looking at a study of a little bit over a two-hundred thousand dollars to have that kind of a study done for the preschool. Then the next step obviously will be that you guys will commit to some plan. For that, according to what I'm hearing tonight, it would be within the next two to three years that you would commit to a preschool.
So the, um, the one sixteen and two thousand and seventeen for the, with that study on the courthouse, that was for the new courthouse or for the old?
That was for the new courthouse.
So then what, what was the recommendation for the old courthouse?
So the, uh.
Part of it?
That's not been done.
Part of it?
So the, this board adopt, this board adopted, um, or committed funding for three projects last year about usage. One was the Ralph Bunch. And Ralph Bunch came in at thirteen thousand, two-hundred and sixty, that study. And you just had that presentation a couple of months back. And then the middle school and the courthouse, the existing courthouse were roughly sixty-two thousand, five-hundred and ninety-one dollars. So, um, and that project is three to four months off is what Mr. Cusenberry has indicated to me. So your total was about seven hundred, almost seventy-six thousand dollars for those three studies that the board wanted to have done. Now, there was another element to the courthouse, which was addressing the drainage. And that was a, I can't remember, it was like another forty-six maybe or something like that, forty thousand?
So with these, the, all these studies that we could continually pay for. What, so you have an engineer, you have an engineering consulting firm doing them?
That's correct. And the studies that they're doing, that they're, are, are looking at the facilities and to see what it would need, what it would cost. Like, uh, for the middle school, what it would cost to bring it back to life? Or if it's, you know, for, for you all to see how much it would cost, just like they, the Wally Wilson presentation on Ralph Bunch. The cost associated with, um, totally renovating that facility. Um, and so that, that's what those studies are. The hundred and sixteen thousand that Mr. Miller referred to was for the conceptual design of the courthouse. And that would be a study that we would be looking at for a preschool. So it's not, uh, to look at an existing fa- facility, but to come up with a conceptual design based on the needs and do a needs assessment on that as well.
So I guess my question is, is can I ask the last question? Um. So they, they spend so much money on studies for years. I've watched the board spend money on studies. Would it not be cheaper if we could have our own employee do studies? And I'm not talking about current employees, I'm talking about where we don't have the expertise, where the expertise can't be gotten by one person.
I don't believe you have, um, the expertise on staff to do architectural reviews. So for instance, with the new, with the existing courthouse, the, the old courthouse, which like, as Mr. Granger says, will be the old courthouse. And the new middle schoo- excuse me, the whole middle school, Mosley Architects is doing that study. So obviously they, you know, we don't, we have very competent engineering folks, but they're not at that level that can look at structural issues like that. So I, I don't know that we could do it in-house. And, you know, I am only fulfilling what this board directed me to do in terms of studies. Uh, this has been a long-term plan for, that goes back several years. And I would be, um, certainly happy to let anybody jump in on the board that, you know, you guys directed this. I think Ms. Ms. Bender has been wanting to see these studies done and, um, that is where we are on it. I, I understand that there is a point at which maybe you don't do a study and you tear a building down. But I also think that the, you know, the folks at Ralph Bunch would be a little upset if you, if you just took that down. But, you know, we had, that was a commitment was to, to look at those buildings as a continual use. And you do have some assets that it would be very wise to get a plan on what you want to do with them. And it may be the ultimate plan of the old middle school will be to tear the facility down and, and use the space as a property for, for schools or for something else, so.
You good, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Uh, we got a few other things we got to go through.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I have an answer for Mr. Granger. One hundred and three times we would have used it, um, last year.
Okay. All right, thanks, Chief. Didn't mean to hold you up there.
Thank you.
I think the next is Mr. Dines. Are you coming to sit on the hot seat, Mr. Dines? Or are you going to sit back there and?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and distinguished members of the board. You all can see three of my projects, which will be holdovers that I have each year that are put into our CIP. The first one is network management systems. The second one is our computer replacement through warranty and life of service. With the make sure we keep those up to date. And the third that we'll have every year is our cybersecurity risk guidelines, testing and training. The fourth request is a new one. And that contains our ability to have a backup telephone server for our VoIP phone system. Another new one is our geo-enhanced nine-one-one compliance software. That would be crucial for emergency situations. Our sixth request is for the next year, in twenty-three, for the Cisco Meraki equipment maintenance license renewals. For all of the firewall switches, access points, climate control that we have in our rooms of equipment that monitors. I have a placeholder in, in number seven for courthouse equipment for twenty-four. They have a budget, as you know, you had that presentation last week. And you approved, but with the rising costs and availability, I just wanted to put a placeholder just in case there was something that Vic Mason or one of the other members of the courthouse might need that we can help them with. So that's just a placeholder. That's all my projects. If we total all those for the next few years, will be eight-hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Mr. Dines, thank you so much. I appreciate the brevity as well. So just to make sure, computer replacement, I, every year, right? Because on my Because on my sheet it shows, it doesn't show any for the follow-on years, but anticipation would be you're replacing some amount of computers every year?
Exactly.
Okay.
Next year probably won't be as many, but I just did not, I neglected to put that in my, my listing for the next year. So you'll see that next year.
Yes.
But it won't be as this high. This one, this one will be higher because it'll be time for the fire rescue and emergency services. And they have about sixty-five or seventy computers, so we're gonna replace those. So that's the bulk of them for this year.
Okay, and could you, I'm, the geo-enhanced nine-one-one SIP compliance software, I'm sorry, I'm not, could you, could you explain that to me a little bit more?
Sure. So what that is, is a fa- federally mandated emergency service from the FCC for compliance. So you know how we have our new phone system throughout the county, the VoIP Avaya phone system? So each phone, of course, has its own IP address. And you get assigned it through the server and the server has the database of all of the numbers. So our engineer, our phone engineer from Avaya will place all the addresses in and make sure that they will be able to tell what room is calling for an emergency. So I don't know if you've heard of Carrie's Law? Carrie was a lady who was in a hotel with her son and she had an emergency. And the son tried to dial nine-one-one, but it didn't go through because you had to dial something else before the nine-one-one. So that new law says every phone must be able to dial nine-one-one and get to the sheriff's office or fire rescue. Then there's another one, it's called the Beams Act. That one is more of the geolocator indicator so that if there was a phone in this room in the back there, if you dialed nine-one-one from there, instead of fire rescue or the sheriff trying to figure out, well, they're in this building, we don't know exactly where they are. You can't do that anymore. You're gonna have to, from that phone, because it has an IP address associated with it and it's in the database in the phone system, it's gonna say, I'm in room one oh five in the sheriff's office first floor multipurpose room. And if there were two phones, we would be able to tell exactly where they were. So that's a new rule that's coming to play. And our sheriff's office already has geolocation. When you call nine-one-one, it has the callback number and your address comes up with the geolocator. So we're already there as far as that goes, but every room is gonna have to be able to tell exactly where you are.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Dines.
You're welcome, thank you.
This is not on your capital list, but it's been something that Chris and his IT team or the, the folks that do the um, recording have talked about, the go-to meeting. Uh, it's, it's an operating cost, so it's not in capital, but while we have Chris, it's essentially six thousand dollars a year, which obviously is not big compared to some of those other projects. But there is a possibility of another way of doing this that might be a cheaper thing. And I think we've talked to you, Mr. Stonehill, and I think some other board members have brought it to our attention of looking at another option. Um, do you want us to get that assembled and bring it back at a, at a, either it can be done as a capital discussion or we could just, you can't add it to your capital because it's already been approved by the planning commission, but it would be a discussion that we could have. Is that something that you'd be interested in? Okay.
I thought go-to meeting worked fine, I don't know why I changed it.
I think that what would Mr. Dines and, and Jeff have indicated is there might be another method that would be a little cheaper that removes kind of the chat process that is a part of the go-to meeting, you know, people can kind of chat or put their comments. I think that Ms. Lackey would maybe want to even weigh in on this. I think that if you have those chats, that becomes part of the public record. And I don't know if you have to respond to those, is that, are those people making comments that then have to be responded to in a public comment type arrangement? I, I just think there's some things that maybe we could fine tune. Doesn't get away from taking, it doesn't take anything away from anybody's ability to participate or to listen to the meeting or whatever, but it, it maybe cleans us up. Because I think you, you may be putting yourself in a situation where those comments are part of the public record. And I don't know that some people want to have comments that they're making as part of the public comment. And do you have to respond to every one of those comments? That's the other thing that's more important, is that?
You're exactly right, Mr. Miller. Actually, Kelly Lackey came back to us last week because she goes to all the legislative sessions. And that was one of the things that came up. You had to make sure that chat is not part of your online meeting process. And what happens when crazy things might come through, I just ignore them. The only thing I will answer is little things like, are you all gonna have a meeting, such and such, I'll answer that. But I won't answer any of the editorial comments that might come through the chat session. So it's better for everybody if that goes away.
So we'll put a little package together and, so can I ask a question in regards to that? So I've used the chat function um, on that to tell you that I can't hear a microphone or someone speaking. How will that occur on something new? How will I be able to communicate with the administrator um, that there's a problem?
Well, usually Lawanda and Lauren are upstairs listening and they'll tell me the same thing that you said, they can't hear as well. Because it may not always be on our side, it could be on the user's side. There might be something wrong at the house, might be something wrong with their internet. But if there's a bunch of people that have an issue and if Lawanda can't hear, she'll, she and Lauren will let me know usually.
We'll, we'll bring it back for a discussion. Obviously, we're not asking for an opinion tonight, but I just wanted to see if we still had that as an interest.
Right, it's redundant and you can move on and, and um, bring it to other options.
Okay.
Oh, Mr., I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Collins, it was twenty-seven hundred fifty-eight dollars. We split our rent in our IT and engineering. So IT pays thirteen hundred forty-two and then uh, the engineering office pays the other fourteen hundred.
Okay, I know you all have been here a long time, so these are pretty quick. Um, these are just in my little budget. So you have the Ralph Bunch hazardous mitigation, five hundred thousand dollars. We put that in and, and I think you saw the comments from the planning commission that they wanted to make sure that that was grant funded only, which obviously um, we had always said that that was our plan. Similar to the roof project is that it would be uh, grant funded only. Um, I don't think there'll, it just depends on, I guess, the grant that you were, that you pursue. There might be some match, but we don't know that at this point. But I, if we recall, the five hundred thousand was to do like um, issues with addressing the structural integrity of the building and then also the um, the mold remediation that, that might exist.
May I, Mr. Chair? So previously I did obtain consensus from the board that we shifted and the five hundred thousand dollar placeholder was originally for the National Park Service grant, which is going to open later in the fall. But we wanted to move up some of those items to this million-dollar IRF grant that staff is prepared to submit an application for this Friday. There is no local match required for that IRF grant. Um, but we can put up the five hundred thousand dollars that we already received from the National Park Service in the current year to do the roof as local match, which just makes our application competitive. So my question then is, would we just need to come back and ask to amend the capital improvement plan in the event that we actually are more successful with grant writing than we were thinking originally? Because I'm, I'm, I can tell you that the board already told staff to work on this million-dollar grant for this Friday. And it, the resolution for it is coming tomorrow night at the end of the meeting. So that's a million dollars there. If we put in for the National Park Service, that's another five hundred thousand dollars.
I don't, I don't think that.
So can we come back and amend the capital improvement plan in, in that event?
Is, what is presented to the planning commission, is that, are you locked in on what's presented in the planning commission? You can't add anymore, you can take away. I think that's a, a question that we have to find out. Is it, is that correct?
Yeah, because I see Heather's already gone, so that would be something we would need to ask her. I don't know if, you know, if, if we could possibly get around that by doing a public hearing on that, um, increasing the CIP. Uh, not sure, you know, how long the grant will take to finalize and get an answer on it. But we'll look into that with Ms. Hall and see what we can do to move forward with that.
So the, the one that's due this Friday, in the call that we had with staff from the state, they indicated that this one is more of a give and take between the locality and the state where you put your application in, then if you have things to add, they'll contact you, reach back out to you. Um, so it's a little more flexible and there's more give and take. But they said that ultimately staff makes the recommendation to the governor in late fall and maybe by Christmas time, we would have an answer on that one, this one that, this week. Then the National Park Service one, my recollection from when we submitted for the current project, the roof project that was funded by them, was that that was like a January, February due date. And then we found out last summer, I think it was last July, we got the notice of award from the National Park Service. So that one could be pushed off. But if, if we end up being successful with the first one or any others that happen in between before next summer, we might need to figure out if there's a process to revisit that if they're for large dollar amounts like this.
And I've added it to our list of things that we need to check on.
Thank you very much.
Um, the uh, turn lane is obviously twenty-six, twenty-seven for the middle school, that's phase two. Um, and the reason that that's so far out is obviously, that's a placeholder. Um, that is uh, because that's when the state is telling us that they'll have that VDOT is saying that's when that, that money would become eligible. The other item on there is, is as you recall, when we presented the um, the roofing contract for the main building of the Ralph Bunch facility, the maintenance building did not, uh, you know, the price of roofing contracts went up and so we had to take out the maintenance building. And so what we're asking for is that we come back and do a secondary, a second project on that this year for a hundred and forty thousand. That's the estimate that we have for that. I can also tell you, uh, in talking with Mr. Cusenberry, the um, the existing main building roofing project, I believe that's getting ready to, to get going. There was um, some back and forth on contracts. And I think then, I believe that the contractor wanted to wait until a certain period of time in the year. Because, and then what happened is, is they got backed up behi- behind some other projects that they were involved in. And so they're looking at doing that very soon, so.
I believe the contract has not been totally finalized, but it's, I believe it's with them to sign off on.
It's on it now, but it was coming out of our offices.
Right, it was, yeah, it was delayed in our office with the reviews and um, some staffing issues in finance. Um, and so it's back on track and it is with the contractor to sign off on. And once they sign off on, it'll come back to Mr. Miller and Ms. Lackey and then we can issue a notice to proceed on that.
That's it. So you want to go ahead and do that?
So this slide is just, um, gives you preliminary numbers that came from the um, audit of fiscal year twenty-one. Of course, we haven't had fiscal year twenty-two yet. Um, but this is what preliminary estimate of what our um, fund balances will be after everything that is reserved by policy, the fifteen percent of the operating budget, the stabilization fund, um, and everything taken into consideration. Um, so we just include that so you can see preliminary where we're at, should be at after our audit this year. And here are our potential funding sources. So twenty-two, twenty-three operating budget, we had built in um, four million thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seventeen, of which two million seven hundred and seventy is earmarked to pay for funding to complete the courthouse, to build the radio system for public safety and a new fire station. Um, capital fund reappropriation, we still have a million dollars left in the gas line project. That should be a, a comma, not a period there. And then prior capital fund appropriations, school bus replacement, there was a hundred and eighteen four sixty left to go to this year's um, purchases. Mis-lay projects, and this is something that um, I too wanted to get the consensus of the board and to see if um, we have projects that have small amounts of money left over from years past. And every year we carry those forward. I have talked with Andrew Gressnickel, our um, auditor from Robinson Palmer Cox. And kind of like with the art money, when I come periodically to you all and say, we're finished with these projects, can we transfer it back into the project line? I'd like to start doing that with um, capital so that we don't carry all these little bit, the pieces. Because lots of times when you're looking to transfer money, you don't want to transfer four thousand here, a thousand here, but put it back into the project line and then we can use those funds um, going forward. Um, is that something that you all are agreeable to? It's okay with our auditors? Um, I can start doing, maybe at the board meetings, have a CIP review process and let you know what money we want to put back in to be used for other projects. Fairview Beach stabilization, this number could be a little bit higher, but I estimated five hundred thousand there. The um, we still have one change order that will be forthcoming, um, probably at the um, September meeting. And um, so we have, will have one invoice left to pay, um, Schneible Engineering and one to um, Finish Line on that project. And so um, I kind of took what we already had encumbered and thrown in some extra there. So right now, about five hundred thousand, probably more left over, I'll know once we get that final change order. Um, EMS fire stations, that includes the money um, that we talked about earlier for the um, conceptual, or the design of um, fire station. Um, middle school expansion, we still have about three hundred thousand dollars left. That can be, only be used for school because of the way the bond was done for the middle school expansion. And as um, Ms. Cupka had asked earlier, approximately two hundred and eighty-one thousand left in the um, King George Elementary School roof replacement, which of course, that was a, um, that was funded through general funds. So it can be used for anything. And then if there's any fund balance that, you know, we might could use um, any surplus. And then that is a typo at the bottom, the ARP should be two million six hundred and six thousand two hundred and eighty-nine, five hundred and fifty thousand already committed. And then when I had done this slide, that was prior to, um, and I forgot to go back and include the two hundred and eighty thousand, sixty thousand, somewhere around there for the HVAC. Um, so now um, discussion, you know, we kind of like want your consensus as to go forward. Um, what projects you all are interested in. Um, and Mr. Miller and I will uh, meet to discuss those projects and give you um, Mr. Miller's priorities and what he feels, um, what uh, projects we can do with the money that we have. And um, just get a path forward and set a date for the next work session. I did speak with uh, Mr. Laux from Davenport and he said he would be available possibly to come to a meeting. And I left the dates that he was available on my desk at work. And so I don't know if we want to set, try to set a meeting date tonight or do that tomorrow night and I can have that um, information from. or do that tomorrow night and I can have that information from Kyle.
So our hope was is that we could have this all wrapped up in September. Obviously, that's up to your schedule. I, you know, we certainly don't want to assume that that can be done if you have other issues and other priorities. But I, you know, last year we got the CIP done, you know, at the end of November. And, and that, it, it is what it is. I mean, but it did, obviously, it's, there's a reason why some projects are carried over because of that. So the earlier, the better. And I know that there has been discussion about having the CIP process being very much either part of the budget, the operating budget process, or very closely behind it. And we intend to do that as well. I think that was Ms. Hahn's plan all along. But obviously, we got hung up with the, with the education budget at the state level. It kind of delayed things. But if you all wanted to plan another work session where we could come back with a recommendation of projects and fitting them into whatever available revenue is, some of the answers to some of the questions that were asked of us tonight, the directions that we got. And then you guys get to make the final decision on things.
Did you get with Kyle and see what his availability is? Sent out another doodle, but then that worked out pretty good. Get everybody, you know, on a calendar and set a date and go from there.
And when he and I talked, I knew it was either Tuesday or Thursday next week that he would be available, but I'm not positive. So I'll double-check that in the morning and I can send that out and see. I don't know what your schedules look like on those days, but I'll send out a doodle poll and let you know what his availability is.
Okay.
And I'll do that first thing.
So, Mr. Chairman, in past history on the board, I've observed that they, each member comes back with their priorities. Is that how you want to do it?
Yeah, why don't you go through there and, and write down your priorities? And Mr. Miller and staff can get together with their priorities and see where we can meet in the middle somewhere.
So do we want to do every one of them, one through five? Like everyone that's on this sheet? Or we do just want to do our one and two? Or how you want to do that?
Previously, when I've been on it and we've done it, it's been like a thumbs up, thumbs down, whether a board member says I would like to support funding this, this year or not. And so then it came down to majority of the board members on each project individual.
Okay. Sounds good. So we're all done?
Yes, we are complete tonight unless you have something else you want to discuss. We're, we're good. That's the end of your CIP project.
When do we need to have our list into him?
Next CIP meeting.
Which I guess we need to discuss. Do you, do you, next week you have the special planning commission meeting on the 25th. So is there a time before the 6th of September you want to meet? You have Labor Day in there and people go away for trips, so I realize that.
Donna was gonna get ahold of Kyle.
Oh, okay, that's right.
And send out a doodle bug.
It's all dependent on Mr. Laux.
It's getting late, I know, Chris.
I know.
All right, so if we're all done, anybody have a motion?
I move to adjourn until tomorrow, Tuesday, August 16th at 6:30 PM in the boardroom.
Second.
Any motion properly seconded? Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Sheriff votes aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Sheriff.